We just have to mention Johnson, all ladies and all the fairing the place.
About him, I bow in heaven, we just thank you again, Lord, for all the great things you've done to this county, and all the great things you do, Lord. We just pray for a year as it turns to a new year, Lord, if it comes into the new people, Lord, just be with them, and if they're going to make the decisions, Lord, for the people, Lord, it's right decision for the people, and keep the people in mind. We just praise you for all the people in Cuduce County, we praise you for all the fire, and all the policemen, and all the search people, Lord. We thank you for all the things they do for us, keep us safe, where we can go do freely things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Cudler?
Here.
Chairman Henry?
Here.
Fisher Winters?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
This time, do we have any items to add or remove from the agenda staff? See, when I had executive legal and land, is that correct?
Yes.
Anything else, gentlemen? Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Salute.
Say it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Has everyone had a chance to read over the minutes, and if so, do I have a motion to approve?
Salute.
Say it. All in favor of approving amendments from the December 4 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. This time, we'll move on to fellow appearances, would you not speak? Mr. Nelson?
I'm Roger Nelson, President of Cuduce County, and I'd like to speak out against the proposal we're looking at tonight that will add another 1 percent to the Cuduce County sales tax via the T-Slosh. I see and hear few supporters of 1 percent increase in our sales tax except for you politicians and employees of the county. I don't hear any stores or any retail establishments calling out for a sales tax increase that will be hurting their sales and business in the future if that sales tax passes. You call this transportation special purchase sales tax, but actually, it's absolutely not a transportation user tax, because no tax is going to be collected on gasoline or fuel, so it's not a user tax. It absolutely is an increase in the food tax, so I hope you share that information with the public and voters that will have to vote on this food tax increase to put it into place. Taxes on food will be going up 33 percent, from 3 percent to 4 percent. This food tax increase will be the classic regressive tax that hits our senior citizens, low-income and fixed-income residents the hardest. As you vote tonight, please consider that you're adding expenses to those seniors and fixed-income folks. If you proceed to put this on ballot for next March, I'm confident that those senior citizens will be well-informed regarding this food tax increase, and also will have the ability to vote for the next commissioners as that comes out. You commissioners had the opportunity earlier this year to recognize that roads and bridges needed added funds, and you cut the road department requested funds in half to only fund about 2.28 million per year on the next slosh coming up. It makes no sense now to come forward with this so-called T-Slosh emergency asking for $60 million. In this last slosh, what you put in, $8 million for economic development. Tonight, you could clearly take the alternative path and use some or all of that $8 million for roads or bridges. Couple years ago, Walker County wasted much of their road and bridge money on a new industrial site, and they were forced into increasing their sales tax. Cuduce County does not need to do the same thing. Cuduce County does not need to own an industrial park and get into competition with the privately-owned Rollins Industrial Park. Rollins Park is advertised as having 42 acres available right now. Already with roads, water, sewer, and gas, all the infrastructures in place. They advertise sites as large as 20-acre sites. Cuduce County hasn't been able to fill Rollins Industrial Park in about 30 years, even though the best use of this property apparently to the county was to build gym and ball fields. If you go forward with this food tax increase, I'm actually confident that we can put it down, since the voters will be well-informed of the added food expenses that you will be responsible for. Please consider to vote alternatives to direct economic development money for roads and bridges. Buying vacant property that will sit there for 30 years is not doing common sense. Again, please vote no on increasing the food tax that you're calling T-Slosh.
Anybody else want to speak?
I agree wholeheartedly, I'm Charisse Miller, living in the county. I agree wholeheartedly with Roger, what he said. I would like to bring up additional points, in that with up to now, there is only one issue on the ballot for March, and that's this T-Slosh. Now, to me, this is a big waste of money. I have no clue as to how much this is going to cost, but we will have to open up every precinct in the county, have at least probably two workers working in each precinct. We'll have to pay those workers, we'll have to pay the utility bills on the precincts. We will also have to have ballots printed up, the provisional ballots, and absentee ballots for two of them. To me, this is a lot of extra expense that we don't need, just for one issue on a ballot. You all are looking at nothing but the dollar signs, and, you know, this will make four slosh taxes in this county. This is ridiculous, in my opinion. You need to better manage our money, and we don't need any more taxes in this county. We need to manage better what we have, and you're not doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else want to speak? Mr. Johnson?
I have a couple of concerns, Ben Scott, Cuduce County, Mr. Nelson, and Charisse. I was having to print off a copy of the resolution that you guys planned to vote on this evening, and you went through the resolution with little assistance. I believe that there's parts of this resolutions that are incongruous with other parts of it. When you go through the preamble of whereas paragraphs, what I call them, you talk about raising not more than $60 million. However, in Article III, there is a provision there that more than $60 million already has to be divided. That's like an either-or, it doesn't have to be one or the other. I also find an issue with the paragraphs, and I find it to be a false choice, where it says that you're doing this so that it will alleviate the need to impose additional added law taxes, or funding the capital-outlay projects, to avoid the need to fund the projects from other sources. I think we need to know exactly which taxes will be raised if we go past this. In addition to that, everything that's been laid out in Article III meets the same definition in the last paragraph of the whereas paragraphs, where it says these are categories of capital-outlay projects. However, in Article III, it doesn't state your categories, it states the following, capital-outlay projects, and I see none listed in this resolution. So I think we should know exactly what the $60 means when we spend for before it's passed.
Anybody else want to speak? Ms. Vaughn?
Good evening, I'm the county manager, Alicia Vaughn, and we have some special recognitions tonight that we would like to make for some employees in the public works department. And Buster, if you want to come up here and join me, we'll let Buster go into a little bit more detail about what these employees did for us, that they definitely went above and beyond the call of duty.
You don't have to come up too, because that's his office.
Yeah, Jeff.
Jeff, how big?
This is our proponent judge, and this actually affected his office. I know he's also very appreciative of the work that these guys did.
Brian?
Can you tell us a little bit about what happened?
We got a call, we got a call a couple weeks ago, that there was a leak in the courthouse, and it turned up to be a cast iron pot on the second floor that had cracked, and the sewer was leaking down into the first floor, and Jeff was just telling me. And so Jeff sent me a text, and I went over there, and it was, I have to say, it was a pretty bad situation. And these guys, man, they worked, I never dreamed the next morning that it would be as clean, and you never would have known that it had happened. So for them to do what they did, and Jeff was able to go to his office the next day, was really a testament to the work they did, so.
That's to remind everybody, it was a dirty week, and I mean, it wasn't a white-duty week.
They were expecting 600 people to report the next morning, so the pressure was on, and so I think y'all finished around midnight, so this was around 3:30, and so they left short after midnight, and we all were very grateful what you guys did. So it didn't go unnoticed.
No, we appreciate it very much. So I have a certificate and a gift card from Ace Hardware for each one of you, so.
Justin Vaughn? Yeah, you want to say something?
Yeah, I do. These guys really worked hard, and they went above and beyond. It's December 4th, actually. And fortunately, if six months ago, that would have been an office where one of our courts would have been set. But we did find some more, Commissioner Henry found some more space in the courthouse, and we were able to make that a waiting room. So there was no one in that office. It was at lunchtime when it started. We closed the office, and we were back in at the next day at 10 o'clock. And so they did a wonderful job, very proud of the work that they did, and they stayed there. They even shampooed the carpet out in the hallway of the courthouse, and really did a great, Buster did a great job, Brian, we had a, very proud of the job.
Would y'all have to say anything?
You just let it sit over. You don't talk about the other people. Matt?
Good morning.
Hey, thank you, we appreciate you so much.
You didn't watch the end. Congratulations, thanks again. You did some work, you were very, 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 very,[1173.36] hearings and motion days on a more regular basis, rather than waiting and just doing it a couple of times a year. He's doing it at least monthly, or even more than that, in an effort to move cases and try to move people out of the jails. And we're having a good bit of success with that. So one of the goals has been to try to resolve cases on a more expedited basis. Judge Van Pelt has been helping us quite a bit with that, not least by cracking the whip and keeping people moving. So I think we've been real successful with that. But it's been a difficult year personnel-wise. We had some turnover this year that was unexpected. I had one have maternity leave for quite a while, and then some personal issues that came up with a couple of people. But we're basically pushing through that now. I think we're close to where we're back to full strength, and right now, we have a great crew of lawyers and admins in the office, and very confident where we're at with the program. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those. I know we have some issues coming up next year with the building that we're in, and with Ms. Vaughn and Commissioner Henry talking about that. I don't really need to get into that unless you want to, but I know we're working on that, and hope to be making progress there pretty soon. So stand there. Are there any questions? I'm ready to answer them. Anything else y'all want to talk about, otherwise, request your approval, and thank you for your continued support.
Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Do we have any questions?
Gentlemen, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
I have left the original with Mr. Gill, and Melissa. It's all right, I'll just get it from you. Thank you, gentlemen.
This is a proposal that was put out for the annual janitorial services. It was published three times. Of the, we received five proposals. Of those five, one was slated the most closely, that met the criteria, was SKB facilities and maintenance, which provides their service now. With a few exceptions, SKB has done an excellent job in the past three years. The proposed contract for 2019 is in the amount for $153,359.66, which includes the same number of buildings and services as this year. The, it was $6,430 higher, but they haven't, it hadn't increased in the last three years. So the funding from this, from the janitorial service budget comes from the name as part of the general operating fund, and the staff will recommend awarding the 2019 annual janitorial services contract to SKB facilities and maintenance.
Do I have a motion? Second. Do we have any questions?
Jay Florida, I was a bit frustrated.
Yeah, in my short time, in my short time, I haven't read the receipt in quite a bit of speeches.
Mr. President, I want to thank you for filling in this interim department. What was the next question?
Well, there was, Christian had this in mind, but it's spreadsheet. I had to look over. It was, it was like three companies. Two companies didn't even attend the free, which was to go around with the facilities. So it was based on, she's got basically like the score sheet, and the next one was certified maintenance services out of Chattanooga. Of course, they didn't submit their E-Bear device, and some other things. That was.
You have a question? All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, on behalf of Dale McCurdy, presenting the proposed contract for the 2019 pilot of the county, the proposed contract is with Quantum Special along some fee of $30,400. This would be paid from, I guess, 2019, how many prior slots?
Fourteen.
Fourteen slots is more than sufficient funding in that slot for GIS to cover it. Mr. McCurdy did look at several different proposals. There was one proposal from a prior company that was slightly lower than this one. However, we weren't able to come to terms on the contract, and they wanted to put all sorts of limitations of liability in the contract that they weren't willing to negotiate out, that if they didn't do the job properly, we'd refund this money, and that's it, no matter how bad the damage was. And it also, Mr. Rupert from the University of Georgia, who I think Dale and Melissa worked with on GIS, highly recommends Quantum Special. They have some additional certifications that other bidders didn't have. I'll be happy to answer your questions. We reviewed the contract within this time.
Do I have a motion? Do we have any questions?
If I memorized first, what was there to provide insurance?
We did have, they eventually did provide insurance, but yeah, they had us thinking for a minute that they didn't, they scrambled around when we asked them for their insurance, and then there were some other responses they gave us back when we were negotiating what should have been pretty straightforward contract terms that we didn't have a comfortable with. Is this a we agreement?
No.
All in favor of the agreement, say aye. All in favor of the agreement, say aye. Carl?
I have a proposal for the renewal of the workers' comp insurance. Coteau County is a member of the nonprofit ACCG Self Insurance Workers' Compensation Fund for the current membership of 173 counties and authorities. Coteau County does receive the safety discount each year of 7.5 percent. That's $27,000 reduction to the premium. The board trustees voted to decrease the rates 6.9 percent for 2019, and awarded dividend in the amount of $4 million to eligible members. This amounted to $57,579 reduction. Staff recommends, I'm sorry, the proposed renewal is a reduction to the net premium of a prior year of $20,045, or 6.8 percent. Staff recommends the approval of the 2019 invoice in the amount of $276,671, and the support and documentation for renewal in the ACCG Group Self Insurance Workers' Compensation Here again, we receive the reduction of the 6.9 percent net reduction in premium of $20,000. We receive the discount of the safety discount program of $27,101, and also the awarded, the county portion of the dividend was $57,579.
Do I have a motion? Second. Do we have any questions? All in favor of the agreement, say aye. Thank you, Carl.
The next item is the renewal of the copy maintenance agreements with Southern Duplicating of Chattanooga. Coteau County currently has 12 copiers located at various departments, which are currently being serviced by Southern Duplicating of Chattanooga. They own an annual contract which runs concurrent with the county's fiscal year. Total number of program copies are 239,000, for a total cost of $3,764, or 1.5 cents per copy.
Do I have a motion for approval? Second. We have any trouble with them, have the, Carl?
No, these, most of these machines were purchased from them and are currently on contract. We, a lot of them, you've seen recycle them out. We get longer than normal on the, on the life, maybe like seven, eight years.
Any other questions? All in favor of the agreement, say aye. Thank you, Carl.
The next item is the proposed renewal of the lump sum cancer benefit and long-term disability insurance coverage for eligible firefighters. The lump sum cancer benefit and long-term disability insurance is an income replacement coverage component designed to comply with the House Bill 146, which went purchase together. Eligibility and premiums are based on all full-time employees, part-time employees, and volunteer firefighters of the county as provided on the roster, who have served the 12 consecutive months as a firefighter with the county. The proposal from BFIS with the insurer, Chubb Accident and Health Insurance Company, is a fixed-price annual premium. Current year is $11,904. It's a reduction from prior year. I might mention that the rates stayed identical to prior year. The premium is down $652, and that's due to a reduction of two career firefighters and two volunteers. We're currently insuring 48 career and 24 volunteers. When a firefighter reaches that one year, 12 months consecutive service with the county, they're automatically covered throughout the rest of the current year. BFIS will ask for an updated census once a year at the before-renewal, and they'll hold that premium for the whole year. Where others that we've looked at require quarterly roster, and it's adjusted, which means that the premium will probably go up because as, as the year goes through, if some of these people reach eligibility, and they would be, we would be building them. But as you can see, the average premium is about $163 a year.
Do I have a motion? Second. Do we have any, that, 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 remember, that unfunded mandate we had last year with the state of Georgia?
Right.
Do you have a question about this?
We can have that same thing with our place office, too. One building drug out and all this stuff, and only special uniform. Now, they're covering up the workers' comp, and I know these are health insurance.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Just a time we have no report on all business, maybe no new business to have.
The first item, Mr. Chairman, is the proposed resolution of the Board of Commissioners, which if approved, would do two things. Number one, it would authorize the, issue the call for the election to be held on March 19th, 2019, to propose to voters, a proposed 1% or 1 cent sales tax for T-SLOSS, transportation special workers, local option sales tax. If approved, the resolution would also approve and authorize the Board of Commissioners to adopt and enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Ringo and the city of Fort Olaford, as to how the T-SLOSS proceeds would be divided among the county and the two cities. The, the two cities have each both approved the intergovernmental agreement at their meeting last Monday night, and it's before the Board for approval. Essentially, the vote would have to come from the voters of the county in March to approve this tax if it goes into effect. And if it does go into effect, it would be a SLOSS tax for five years, in 20 consecutive calendar quarters. The Board does have to designate an estimate of what you think the tax may raise, and that's where the $60 million figure comes from. But the tax would be imposed for five years, irrespective of the amount it raises, whether it be above or below $60 million. Of that amount, of the amount collected, 70 percent would be retained by the county for use on transportation projects. 20 percent would go to the city of Fort Olaford for use on transportation projects, and 10 percent to the city of Ringo. And that's just kind of an outline or highlight of what's in the resolution. I'll be happy to answer any more specific questions.
Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
I'll start.
Do we have a, um, for questions?
Chad, if I may ask, the city of Fort Olaford and the city of Ringo have already passed this resolution, am I correct?
They have passed the intergovernmental agreement, correct. The resolution has to, the law says the resolution has to be issued by the government authority of the county. But yes, they have both each passed the intergovernmental agreement.
So they're both saying to their citizens that we think this is, this is something that everybody should, the cities of Ringo and Fort Olaford should vote?
Correct. They have blessed the putting this proposal on the ballot, and by entering into the intergovernmental agreement and approving it, they have essentially requested that this Board pass the resolution and put it on the ballot.
So in the truest form of democracy, what we're doing is allowing citizens of Coteau County to vote for the T-SLOSS or vote against the T-SLOSS, whichever they desire.
That's right. It's got to pass by a, by a simple majority, 50 percent plus one of the voters.
So the citizens will be deciding, not just a group of people?
That's right. You decide what to put on the ballot.
How did the city feel, Chad, when you had this?
Honestly, I can't answer, I don't know.
They've worked on that before.
Yes, they've worked. I just feel I got, I signed the intergovernmental agreement from Dan Roddick, G. Simmons, saying it did pass.
And just to clarify, from appearances, this isn't just a food tax, this is everything you set up over.
It's what, I mean, it's on anything taxable, so, except what the state in the statute stands for.
I think we're misleading earlier, so I think we'll reserve that way. We don't have any other questions, Melissa, we go around all of those places.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Fisher Cutler?
Yes.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
No.
Mr. Law?
Yes.
Thank you, Chad. And you're up again, I believe.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, is a proposed intergovernmental agreement between the county and the city of Fort Olaford for the use of our county employee health clinic facility. As the Boards are aware, we already operate the, the health clinic and have been doing so for roughly a year, where we contract out with one-to-one help to provide the professional services, and we have a set amount of fixed costs under our existing agreements to operate that clinic. The, the city has requested that their employees and cover dependents be allowed to use the clinic, and they are willing to reimburse the county for their pro-rata percentage based on the number of employees they have versus the total number that would be using the clinic. Carl and Alicia and Ann Kane have confirmed that the employees of Fort Olaford using the clinic will not increase our overall cost, all of our fixed costs are the same, and it will actually, we still have room where we could grow and add more employees later to the clinic if needed. Right now, the, the city's cover dependents and employees are roughly 20 percent of what the counties are that would be using the clinic, so they would be reimbursing the county on the 20 percent, 20 percent fixed monthly cost of the clinic, of the clinic operations, plus the pharmaceutical dispensary and the lab services each month. And we put in the agreement that we would, on an annual basis, each December, we would get the city's health insurance census data to see if their usage is going up or down, and that way, we could adjust their percentage of reimbursement accordingly the following year. And the city has already approved this agreement at their meeting last Monday night. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do I have a motion? Second. Do we have any questions?
Yes, I mean, this, this will help, I mean, just support the clinic and everything else, too.
That's right. From the county standpoint, it's not costing the city more money, we're not losing any of your level of service, it's actually saving us. We're going to get the same service for 20 percent less a month.
Could be open, but, but, maybe.
Yeah, we actually had some improvement in Spain, and I bring over some like one down in.
And this has been offered also to the city of Ringo.
All in favor of approving this intergovernmental agreement, say aye. Chad? Now, would you be able to comment or speak?
Mr. Chairman, I'll start. I'd like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, and a very happy New Year, since we won't see you on the first Tuesday of the month. And I would also like to recognize Commissioners Ray Johnson and Commissioners Bobby Winters, who's great at working with you two. You serve the county well, you voted your conscience as, as we, as we witnessed just a few minutes ago. And that's fine, that, that's what democracy is all about, so, job well done, and it was a pleasure working with you both, and we wish you all the best of luck.
Same, same here, wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and a happy and safe New Year, and Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Winters, great work with y'all, although we, like you say, we don't see eye to eye every day, but we still walk up to those friends and do business and go on, and hope y'all are friends for, for all the time in the future. And grateful to the ones that look forward, working with the new ones that's got on board of, of, of County Hospital.
Reiterate, had a pleasure, and it's at least half here, once the youngest did it for him.
It is what it is. It has been a pleasure, honor to serve the constituents. You know how we always get along, we've always respected each other, never had a harsh word, you know, always grew. I've got that most respect for, for myself. Thank you for the privilege of serving.
Don't keep talking now, I might come there and want to go meet you and break on them.
You're probably a prince.
Yeah.
I'm not in the hate group.
Mr. Chairman, one other county employee that I forgot to mention, Taylor's, is leaving us to go on to, to another career opportunity with the state of Georgia. So best of luck in your endeavor with them.
I do, with, with, sorry to be on, I have one reminder about, we have T-SLOSS meetings that we're more than happy to answer questions, and that's coming in January 10th, at the Fort Olaford Gym, and we do ask that you come out, if you have questions, we want to answer. That is the place to ask, and we'll be more than happy to answer. Didn't make the interruption there, man.
I just want to thank y'all, thank everybody, thank this community, we have them, we get this brief, and we walk out the door like men, whatever. I come a long time here, seven years before I decided to run. I am concerned about some of the ones that have decided to run, that, you know, I hope they didn't help the government, but there's a lot, I want to get behind the door there, and I did. There's a lot that goes on here, a whole lot. I mean, sometimes it's easy, and sometimes it's horrible. I mean, believe it or not, and it's hard to listen to people who won't knock the truth out here. I mean, stand here, we stand here, and we listen to them, and it's nowhere closer, and that's just like the newspaper. Yes, you do say it, but they can put it out of text a lot of time to make you say what you didn't say. That's the fact of life, I like everybody, and I love my family, thank my family for the four years that y'all give me to learn, and thank y'all for this. Thank you.
At this time, can I get a motion to go into, I'm trying, I don't get a motion for that. A motion, I want to take an exception for legal and, and proper.
Don't move.
Second.
Pro-.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Mr. Law?
Yes.
At this time, do I have a motion to come out and say?
Second. All in favor of coming out and saying, say aye.
Aye.
Now, do I have a motion to adjourn? We have nothing for our.
Don't move.
Don't move. Second. All in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.